I'm sorry, Tom. Is anybody here that can hear me from Star News?
I can hear you, sir.
I'm just getting the call.
We we are live, by the way.
Okay. Let me call you real quick.
Okay. Kevin, our last candidate has decided to join us. We're just trying to guide him in.
Testing. Welcome aboard, Mr. Shea. We are live with a obvious placeholder right now.
Mr. Shea, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate it. Mr. Shea, can you hear me? You're on mute, sir.
Unmute yourself, Alan.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Mr. Mr. Shea, thank you so much for deciding to join us. We truly appreciate it.
I can hear that deep baritone voice, Alan Shea.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, we're back to you. I think we are. I think we have everyone in the house now.
Wonderful. I'll start the spotlight on you and we will begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Bray from the Southern California News Group. I need to actually decide to be visible. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Bray from Southern California News Group and the Pasadena Star News. I want to take note that I have my purple tie on tonight, neither red nor blue. We're playing it right down the middle tonight. Thank you for joining us for tonight's forum. I want to thank our candidates for joining us. Sincere thanks for for taking the time this evening. I know it's a big chunk of time for you, but we're truly grateful to have you here. I'd also like to thank Martin Gordon. We're grateful to partner with Martin and the Pasadena Community Coalition on so many different things these days. And a terrific partnership, and we're very grateful for for their help, expertise, and wisdom. This evening, we'd also like to thank Justin Chapman, journalist and host from Pasadena Media's News Wrap Local. Thank you so much for coming, and I'd like to thank Brennan Dixon, our city hall reporter from Pasadena Star News. Also, thank you so much for taking the time. Uh, thank you to Kevin Sablon and Caroline Wong for managing our event this evening. And for all the energy you've invested in this enterprise. And a special thank you to Star News readers and Pasadena's voters. We are very pleased and grateful to be able to present tonight's dialogue on the issues for you. And with that, here's our moderator for the evening, Mr. Martin Gordon.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for that introduction. Thanks again to the sponsors of this event, the Pasadena Star News, the Pasadena Community Coalition, and News Wrap Local. Good evening, all, and welcome to the 2022 Candidate Forum for Pasadena Districts Three, Five, and Seven. I'm Martin Gordon, Chair of the Pasadena Community Coalition and your moderator for this evening. I'm sorry, I'm hearing someone in the background there. Mute mute yourself, please. The elections take place on Tuesday, June the 7th. The general municipal election for council districts will be held only if a candidate does not receive fifty percent of the votes, more than fifty percent of the votes in the primary election. Elected council members will sit in council for four years, beginning December 12th, 2022. All candidates were extended an invitation to attend this forum. Let's meet the candidates. First, John Kennedy, District Three, incumbent. Welcome, John. Unmute yourself. Couldn't hear you, John. Unmute yourself.
My name is John Kennedy.
Okay, John, we're not ready for that yet. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure that you could hear me.
Okay, sorry.
I'm just, that's okay. I just want to make sure that we're you're we're in sync. So I'm going to introduce everybody, then we'll get back to everybody. Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brandon Lamar, District Three candidate. That's John. That's not Brandon. There you go. There's Brandon. Hi, Brandon, and welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Next, we have Jess Rivas, District Five, incumbent.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, there's Jess. She's an incumbent who is running unopposed, but graciously agreed to be with us to speak to her constituents and answer questions. Thank you, Ms. Rivas. And so do your people. Next, we have Jason Lyon, District Seven candidate.
Hi, Martin.
Hi, Jason. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
And next, we have Alan Shea, District Seven candidate. Hi, Alan.
Hello.
You look debonair there, young man. And Siran Hajiyan, District Seven, will not be in attendance. Now, okay, I I like to see him, but we've got to move on. He's got a good profile. We're going to move on to our panelists. Panel, the panelists who we asked some questions today are Brennan Dixon, reporter for the Star News. There's a good looking guy in it. And next, we have Justin Chapman. There, you see him on the other side there. I like that. Journalist and host of News Wrap Local. Welcome, both of you. This is going to be a lively event. We got some good reporters here. So thank you. Thank you, Martin. Our timekeeper for today will be Caroline Wong, Director of Communications, Star News. Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
I don't think we're going to get a chance to see Caroline. Here's the format for today. Listen closely, because sometimes I get confused, so Tom or anybody else back there, make sure I'm getting it all right. We would begin with a general question to all the candidates. You will have one minute to respond. We will then move to the panel for a series of more specific questions. Each candidate then will have two minutes to respond to the question uninterrupted. Then each candidate will have an opportunity for rebuttal thirty seconds. Candidate will be notified when ten seconds remain. As moderator, I will advise you when your time is up and we will move on. Candidates will alternate as the first responder to the questions. Sorry, dear. What did I do here? At the end of this two-minute round, we'll have a lightning round. Using the same format, but candidates will only have thirty seconds to respond, and there will be no rebuttal. At the end of the lightning lightning round, there will be one last general question with one minute to respond. Any questions on the format? Just on the format? If not, let's begin. First question will be asked by the moderator. It's just a general question to get us warmed up. Why should Pasadena vote for you? And this is just a one-minute, quick one-minute answer. And we'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
My name is John Kennedy. It has been my honor and privilege to serve on the City Council for nine years. I was born and reared in Pasadena, a Blair High School graduate, University of Southern California, and Howard Law School. And I'm dedicated making our city a better place to live. I led the effort to establish our Community Police Oversight Commission and to require body worn cameras. I'm a strong advocate for affordable housing with four new developments being built now in District Three, one for previously homeless seniors with full wraparound services and one for a hundred and eighty unit of workforce housing, just to name two. In my next term, I will lead the charge to build three thousand new units of affordable housing with fifteen
Ten seconds.
reserved for extremely low income families. So I ask for your support and I seek reelection to our city council. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, John. Mr. Lamar?
Hello, everyone. My name is Brendan Lamar, born and raised in Pasadena, grew up in Pasadena schools, attended city programs, and I've also worked for the City of Pasadena Parker Recreation Department. Currently, I serve I serve as the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, and I've been on that commission for about six years in the community. I was a part of the team who created the Bill of Rights, Community Bill of Rights in 2020, which designed, created, organized, and advocated for the Community Civilian Oversight Commission. I was the first person running that endorsed and supported rent control. I was the first person that supported also that organized for police reform, housing immigration rights, reproductive rights, workers' rights, and children and youth services. Not the first person, but I advocated for it.
Ten seconds.
I am running because I want safer streets and to stop dumb violence. I'm running because I want housing for all to be affordable for everyone. And I believe that it's time for all of us to be one Pasadena in the community and have accountability across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Ms. Rivas?
Hey, everyone. I'm Jess Rivas, and I've been honored to represent District Five over the past sixteen months, and I'm running to continue serving because I want to make sure that Pasadena is a place that works for everyone. And since I've been on the council, I've done that by doing a number of things. I have supported affordable housing and new ways to support our unhoused neighbors, for example, through tiny homes. I've stood firmly with renters who are the majority of Pasadena's and also the majority of District Five residents by supporting rent control and also opposing ending our eviction moratorium prematurely. I've stood against unlimited campaign contributions and have worked to protect our environment, just to name a few. And so that's been my record so far, and that's exactly what you can expect from me when I'm elected to a full term. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Jess. I like that. Boy, that's quick and to the point. Mr. Lyon?
Thank you. My name is Jason Lyon. I am a candidate in District Seven. I'm an attorney by trade and the current Vice Chair of the Pasadena Planning Commission. And I'm running to create a more livable, walkable, and sustainable Pasadena. I have current real-world experience in balancing our need for housing that's affordable at every income level with our desire to maintain and preserve the character of Pasadena. And I am the only candidate in District Seven who has signed Pasadena's pledge to run a fair, honest, and transparent campaign. I am proud to be endorsed by Representative Judy Chu, Supervisor Catherine Barker, State Senator Anthony Portantino, and our current council member, Vice Mayor Andy Wilson. And I would be honored to serve as your council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And Mr. Shea?
Hello, my name is Alan Shea. I'm a product of Pasadena from five years of age until now. And I attended PUSD, graduated from John Muir, graduated from the University of Southern California, also graduated from law school, hold a broker's license, have owned my own business since graduating from college. Immediately after graduating, a colleague of mine from high school, he and I joined forces to create a firm that he and I both still are contributing to this community, both with employment, with beliefs of what the community can offer, and a true understanding of lived experience as to how to bring fairness, balance, housing, and opportunities to this community. One of the things that I enjoy is being a political scientist, a political scientist, to make sure that we have the balance that we need in our governance, so the voice of the people are heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Well, that does it for our first opening question, and this kind of warms us up for things to come. Now we will go to our two-minute questions. A reminder, you'll have two minutes to respond. You will have one minute for rebuttals. And the first question, the next question will be asked by Justin Chapman.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. Okay, the question is, what kind of city manager do you think Pasadena needs and should have? Is the process working? Does the relationship between the city council, staff, and city manager need to evolve and how? Mr. Lamar, you're up first. We have a two-minute answer. Remember to unmute.
So I think that the next city manager should be somebody who is very transparent, somebody who I would like to see somebody who comes from the community, who knows Pasadena, who knows how Pasadena works. I would like to see somebody who is definitely would like to see more engagement in our city in regards to our police department, accountability in regards to our police department, not only just our police department, but all of our departments being accountable for the spending and appropriation of funds. And not only that, but also the programs that we have in our city that will be for every single person. I think as of right now, I would not say that the the search for the city manager is very transparent. I think that we have to have more community input in the search for the city manager, and I think that we can do a better job. As of right now, I think that there's so much more that that we would have liked to seen from our old city manager, but I am hopeful that our next city manager will take us to the next level and where our city has to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Now, Mr. Kennedy, unmute for your two-minute answer.
Um, first of all, I would say that the current process in selecting a new city manager is working. I've been a part of selecting city managers in the past, even before I became an elected member of the city council. Obviously, we need someone who has an established track record in dealing with complex issues in a diverse community. And as we have all witnessed over the past three years particularly, but even before that, we need a city manager who is not afraid to step in to very difficult situations and provide leadership in finding solutions, whether it be with the police department, parks and recreation, our finance department, et cetera, including water and power and public works. So in all of our departments. Critical to our success or the success of the next city manager is that unique relationship that he or she must have, not only with their department heads, but with the community leaders and just regular citizens who, from day to day, need quality city services. So I'm optimistic that we will receive someone, that we will convince someone to be a part of this city who really loves people more than loves government and understands the heart of people. And that's going to make us a better city. That's going to make city government more responsive
Ten seconds.
the needs of our community. And I'm a part of that, and I want all of you on the line to be a part of that process as well. That's called good government.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Lamar, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal.
No rebuttal.
Okay, let's move on to Ms. Rivas for your two-minute answer.
Well, thank you so much. This is a really important question, and it's one that I've been thinking a lot about lately, because we are in the middle of that process. It probably is one of the most important decisions that we as the council will make. In terms of what I'm looking for, of course, we want someone with incredible technical skills and abilities and leadership. All those things almost go without saying. I know we're going to get a really great crop of candidate candidates, because we are a really amazing city, and we're going to attract people far and wide. So I'm not too concerned about getting someone with those technical skills. What I really am looking for beyond that is someone who's going to be a partner with the council to enact bold and ambitious policy to address these major issues that we're facing. The day-to-day governance and inertia of government, it can kind of just roll along without, you know, much, you know, as things are, I'm sorry. It could just kind of roll along without much change or input, or just the inertia will carry us in the same direction we are going if we don't push things the way they need to go. And so I'm looking for someone who can be a partner with the council and shares our vision to really do those those bold things and not just kind of be a caretaker for the day-to-day city governance. In terms of changes or different things I'd like to see in in a next city manager. So I've had the the honor and privilege of working with both Steve Vermel and now Cynthia Kurtz as an interim. And I think something that I've really come to appreciate through two budget cycles is that the council's brought into that discussion rather late. It's, you know, the these discussions or process starts very early in the fall, essentially, I believe, with the departments. And they're working for months at a time on their their budgets. And I would love to to work with the city manager who can bring the council in earlier to have those bigger holistic conversations about our budget and is willing to engage with us on that in that regard. So it's not just, okay, it's May, time to vote up and down on the budget. But we're able to have those bigger conversations together and have more of a
Ten seconds.
a philosophical discussion early on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas. Okay, Mr. Lyon, unmute for your two-minute answer.
Thank you. This is an important question. I I think it goes without saying that we need someone who is a strong fiscal manager, has managed a large municipal budget before, is a is a personnel manager with experience and skill. But the qualities, I think, that that would set apart the right candidate for me are someone who is visionary and creative and forward-thinking and empathetic. On the visionary front, you know, we need someone who is able to look beyond this budget year and this week in the city to to help the council envision what the city's going to look like in five years and ten years. We have some serious challenges facing the city, particularly economic challenges, environmental challenges that require action and thought now. And we need someone who is able to engage in a robust dialogue with the public and with the council about how to address those those needs before they become dire. We also, I think it's critical that the city manager, the city manager really runs the city. I don't know that people really understand that. I think sometimes people think that it's the, you know, the day-to-day management is the mayor and the council, but really, the city manager is the chief administrative officer of the city. And we need someone who understands the human impact of the the decisions the city makes and is able to engage on a human level and to understand the the emotion of the community around some of the big issues that our city faces. And in terms of the relationship between the council and the the city manager, I think it's important, our council has traditionally ceded some of its authority under the, under the city charter, all authority rests with the city council. And the city council should should exercise that vigorously as needed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Mr. Shea, unmute for your two-minute answer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the question, because I think this question is pivotal for Pasadena moving forward. I say this because in the last forty years, I've been in business forty years since eighty-one. I've been involved with every city manager in one form or another. And I really think the key moving forward is having a city manager who truly can understand the voice of the community. And the reason why I put it in in this content is because the administration aspects of our city is going to function with or without whomever we get. Okay, and we've already demonstrated that. We've been able to make a smooth transition from one city manager to another. You have a great team of supporting cast. All these things are there to make sure that our city function well. The type of manager is like a quarterback on a football team. He has to be responsive and know each player so that he can get the best out of those players and get the best results to win. And when the team wins, everyone wins. That's what the City of Pasadena wants out of a city manager, for everyone to win. And in order to do that, that individual must understand the difference between how to apply democracy versus how to really govern the city through the governance elements that he or she may have available to her. That seemed to be a tough, a tough balance. But I think if this transparent process that we're
Ten seconds.
hoping for will bring about that kind of individual, then we'll have a good chance. If not, I think we're going to have a repeat of our past, and I think we can overcome that because we've learned from our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Lyon, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal.
No rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Martin.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question will come from Brennan Dixon.
Hello to our audience, hello to all involved. My question is, it's been four years since residents voted on a ballot measure to bring legal cannabis to the city, and Pasadena only recently opened its final dispensary. In a community that bore the brunt of the war on drugs, what is your plan to address, to enforce social equity compliance? Mr. Kennedy, please unmute yourself and provide a two-minute answer.
From the beginning of the process, the city manager met with each city council member. My protestations were as follows, that the community that received the brunt of the negative police activity and law enforcement activities needed to be given an opportunity to participate at the table. That would mean, in many cases, small businesses or small operators. The city manager at that time, Steve Vermel, did not believe that was a logical way to move forward. And everything that followed beyond that supported larger cannabis operators. So from the beginning, I let my disconcern or disgust be known not only to the city manager, but to my colleagues on the be known not only to the city manager, but to my colleagues on the city council. I'm 110% in support of social equity then, and I'm supportive of it now. Because of a recent decision by the council, there are three opportunities for cannabis operators in District Three. Why not have one of those, at least one of those, to be from someone who was either formerly incarcerated, who looks like me, or who is Latino or African-American? I will not be satisfied unless that happens. There are other colleagues on the city council who agree with me. And I'm hopeful that through the efforts of Councilmember Tyron Hampton, along with the full city council, that we will get that social equity that is required to make our cannabis program in the city of Pasadena fair and just and take into account
That's time.
injustices to African-Americans and Latinos.
Mr. Lamar, please unmute yourself and share your plan to enforce social equity compliance. Two minutes.
Absolutely. I think when it comes to cannabis industry, being in a community that has friends, family, and neighbors that I know that have been negatively, negatively associated with this by being charged, by being arrested. I think it's it's very important for us to have social equity in a part of this. And when it comes to our cannabis, the first thing I'll say before we even get to the cannabis is I think that we have to start with expunging records. I think that's the first step because we did, you know, with the rest and, you know, people having those records on their arrest record or their background, we have to have expungements. And that's the first step to really being able to have social equity in the cannabis industry because you can be arrested and then still not qualified to even have a license to own your own, your own shop because you have that a record. And so I think that's the first step is we have to have to have that expungement. The next thing I'll say is, I think that the first opportunities for social for this incubator, I think we have to create incubator programs, meaning that the first steps is we have to have people that are from Pasadena to take part in these programs before we expand it to anyone else. I think that's how we reinvest back into our community. And so I don't think we just, we should just have one person in District Three or one individual or or business in District Three that can actually do this, that's of color or of descent. But I think all three of them has to come from Pasadena and has to come from the neighborhoods and the areas who are really affected by this.
Ten seconds.
So I'm definitely in support of this initiative to have social equity in Pasadena, especially in District Three Northwest where most of the rest happened.
That's time.
Mr. Kennedy, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal if you would like.
No rebuttal, other than to say that it's a nonstarter unless we see as a community some African-American or Latino operators in the city. In District Three, there was only supposed to be one cannabis operator per district. That's what the voters approved. The council overlooked the wishes of the voters and decided that they would allow three only in one district, and that's District Three. And because District Three is heavily minority, let's make sure that the cannabis operators in District Three, at least one, if not two, are African-American or Latino because they were the ones who were disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, the quote-unquote war on drugs. It's a war on black and brown people. Thank you.
Mr. Lamar, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal if you would like.
I definitely agree. I think that, you know, in some ways, we are still fighting this war on drugs in our community. And we have to do a better job at creating opportunities for for District Three. And so I definitely agree. I think that every one of those opportunities should be from people that is from Pasadena that has been affected by it. And I do stand by that because, you know, we're still affected by it. You still see the the results of it in our city. And so I do stand by that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rivas, will you please share your plan to enforce social equity compliance? Two minutes, and you're unmuted. You're good.
Great, yeah. So I am very interested in establishing a separate social equity permit process. The idea, of course, as we've been discussing, is that those who have been most affected, most harmed by our past cannabis laws would get the assistance to enter this new legal market. However, I understand, I think I saw an article a while back, and I've been seeing, hearing things across the state about different equity programs that haven't been very effective at reaching that goal, that that kind of the 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 well-moneyed groups, the groups that have the funding are the ones who are still able to take advantage of the programs that have been established. So I'm hoping that we can learn a lot from what other cities and jurisdictions have tried to make sure that our social equity program is one that works and actually achieves that goal. I know we already have steps in motion to get one in place. At least last night, we had, the city had a community meeting on this topic to get the community, the folks' thoughts and hear their input on what they would like a a community, a program like this to look like. I haven't watched the video yet because I had a, I was speaking to residents in my district in person last night, but I'm sure we'll see the video, and I'm sure we got a lot of great feedback. So I'm looking forward to continuing that process. We're just getting started. It's going to be a long one, but we need to make sure we we do it as efficiently as possible and in a way that actually helps the people that we want to help.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Shea, will you please unmute yourself and tell us your plan to enforce social equity compliance in Pasadena?
Well, thank you, and I really enjoyed that question. And the reason why is because I'm a a big proponent of creating stability for future generations. And I believe that in order to create an equitable position with the cannabis business at this juncture, we would need to create a real strong base. And the only way that I can see it being sustainable is to team up. I think we would need to partner up with with nonprofits, with schools, with people who are very familiar with this particular industry because it is quite integral, to say the least. And in order for a small business or or first-time entrepreneur to get into this arena, it's not going to be an easy transition. And one of the things, if we're going to talk about creating social equity, is really about how to create the sustainability of that, not just throwing out all of these concepts and ideals. I know from my own personal experience, my family's 50 years as the oldest black business in Altadena. We've done it in that manner. We've learned how to bring community in with partnerships and make our business survive through recessions and through COVID. And I believe that through that experiment, that journey, that anyone can sustain and have real social equity, just as I've done in my business of 40 years and just as my family business of 50 years, the Little Red Hand has done and continues to serve the community. So I know from a proven track record that it can be done, and it can be done in any business.
Ten seconds.
If the combination between the different entities are there for the same interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Two minutes. What is your plan to enforce social equity compliance?
Thank you. It is unanimous. I also support the creation of a parallel permitting process to create social equity in cannabis industry. For me, that program needs to have two key components. The first is the one we've been talking about, which is a permitting system that at least attempts to offset historic inequities in the criminal justice system that affected black and brown people primarily. So that we're getting licenses into the hands of people who who actually suffered in the system previously. Like a couple of of my fellow panel members have mentioned, I think we, to to make it effective, it needs to, we need to have a program that that helps with access to seed funding. We need a program that helps with entrepreneurship training so that we don't just throw people out animal licenses and throw them out to to live or die in the system. So that they, you know, people have a reasonable prospect of of creating a working business. And then the second piece for me that is an equity, an important equity component, is looking at where we cite these. It's so right now we have a a series of of kind of high-end and you know, relatively pricey boutiques along Colorado Boulevard. And I think we want to make sure that as part of the social equity program, we're creating access to cannabis as a as a medical resource all over the city and for communities across Pasadena. Thanks.
Mr. Shea, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal if you would like. Please unmute yourself, and your timer will begin.
Yeah, I just really believe the key to any type of sustainable business is not speculation. It has to come from a concrete program. It has to come come from something that has been provable. There's all these unpredictable pitfalls that exist in the cannabis industry, certainly from the the crew of clients that I have in that industry who who have these challenges. And I'm sure that without somebody who has a good awareness, a community that has a good support base, and someone who really is fully prepared to take on that stress because it's still a lot of loose ends regarding legislation on the federal level. You gotta, you gotta have somebody who who comes into that arena with a good team and somebody who knows how to cultivate long-term planning. And that's the only way I can see it surviving.
Ten seconds.
Mr. Lyon, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal to the rebuttal.
I see. No rebuttal. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. I will send it back up to the moderator.
Thank you. Our next question is going to come from Justin Chapman. It's question number four.
During a recent emergency meeting in response to gun violence in the Northwest Pasadena community, locals suggested a Pasadena First Hiring Initiative to spur the hiring of African-Americans and Latinx communities who are facing a high rate of unemployment. What would be your plan to create jobs? First up, Mr. Lamar, with your two-minute answer.
Thank you. I think the first part is to, number one, as I stated before, help to get records expunged. You can't get a job that pays good money until you get your record expunged. We have people that are dealing with that right now. And I believe in second chances. I believe in 100 chances if you if you turn your life around. And so I think that's the first step. The second step is, I think, staying with the cannabis. I think we should take that 4% tax that the cannabis is giving to people who have cannabis businesses and giving in Pasadena and create job opportunities with that to help to actually train on how to get a job, how to sustain a job. But not only that, but what even what businesses to start because everybody doesn't want to be employed by someone. Some people might want to start businesses. And so how do we encourage and educate our community on how to do that? The next thing that I'll do is expand the MASH program to create more opportunities in Pasadena for more black and brown community members to actually be a part of the public Works Department and to get that experience and to take that experience to the next level. And then not only that, but expand the Rose Program so that it can continue to be year-round like it was in the time of COVID that we've had to expand those programs to opportunities for our young people throughout the city to help engage them and keep them engaged throughout the city as well. And then the last thing I'll say is to really engage and support our local nonprofits. So nonprofits like Flint Ridge, who has a program, apprenticeship program to actually teach working skills for individuals in the community. And so I believe that we have areas to do it. I think that we just have to expand those areas and making sure that it's viable to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Lamar. Councilmember Kennedy, unmute for your two-minute answer.
Repeat the question.
What is your plan to create jobs, particularly in the Northwest community?
It is a difficult prospect to think that the city government is going to create jobs. Jobs are created by the private sector, but let me say that I have been endorsed by the Los Angeles Orange County Building Trade Association. And in that endorsement, along with the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, we are going to create programs for the formerly incarcerated, those who have some kind of impediment related to employment, to actually go through an apprentice program and to be a part of a union and receive union wages. That could be $40 to $60 an hour. So that's a program that will come about under my leadership with the two organizations that brought me into the discussion and certainly has endorsed at least one of the entities. The Los Angeles and Orange County Building Trade have endorsed my candidacy. Additionally, longstanding, I worked for the Flint Ridge Foundation. I worked for J.L. Mosley. I incorporated the business. I served on the different giving charitable organizations for the Mosley family. So I'm intimately involved in their programs and have spoke numerous times at their graduation and their training programs for those young men and women who were formerly incarcerated and having a difficult time finding employment. But we got them through union programs
Ten seconds.
that allowed them an opportunity to become really middle-class citizens and homeowners. I will continue that effort and
That's time.
effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Lamar, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, just one thing. I think one of the things that really gets me in Pasadena is that we create programs rather than expanding programs that are already in existence. And I have no problem with creating programs that are working. But I think that we also have programs that are already in existence that work very well. And if we expand those programs, as I stated before, you don't have to create an apprenticeship program at Flint Ridge. We have it already. It's already in District Three. What we need to do is expand that program and making sure that that program actually have access to more unions, more labor union, so that we can expand the services in our district and not only in our district, but in our community. I think it's very important for us to stop trying to recreate the will and actually get on the will that has already been created and
Ten seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Go to Councilmember Rivas for your two-minute answer.
Excuse me, I think
Sorry, apologies.
the rules. But I have an opportunity to have a one-minute rebuttal or make a comment.
You do. You do, Councilmember. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I would say that several of the young people who are on this call today had an opportunity to participate in the federally funded CETA program, which has now evolved into our Summer Rose Program. So in some respect, I misspoke. We took hundreds of young people, primarily from Northwest Pasadena, hired them in the city of Pasadena through a summer program that did not guarantee them a job per se, but gave them skills and exposure to jobs that the private sector or even the public sector could call upon those individuals and provide them with an opportunity. So the city does have a role. Sometimes that role is limited, and MASH is another opportunity that I've greatly supported.
That's time.
Councilmember, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember. Apologies for the oversight. Now let's go to Councilmember Rivas for your two-minute answer.
Thank you, and this is such an important question because it's not just about a job. It's about a good job. We're seeing so many people are working multiple low-paying jobs or seeing, you know, the gig economy. People are just trying to scrape by by doing by doing whatever they can. But what we all need is a good decent paying job with benefits and where you're treated with dignity and respect. And like, I gonna echo a theme that's already emerging and we really need to partner with labor. Because that's their mission as well, too. Their mission is to fight for workers, stand up for workers, make sure they're treated fairly and make sure that they get those jobs. Apprenticeship pro- programs have already been mentioned. That's essential wherever there's synergy between the city itself and uh labor unions to ha- have apprentice apprenticeship programs or have apprentices work on city projects. That's something we absolutely should be working at and just supporting labor in general because we had, we share the same mission to bring as many good paying, good benefit jobs to the city. Um and so that's what I would, what I have been fo- you know, focused on and what I would continue to focus on moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Lyon, your plan to create jobs, two minutes.
Thank you. Um. I think there are a couple of components here. The I I guess the first in my district is that that um you know, we don't often talk about the shootings in Northwest when I'm out um knocking on doors. And so uh I would like to to facilitate a conversation in the city around uh being one Pasadena and not two Passadenas. And that has been an important part of my campaign in my district to to talk about some of the issues that are happening across the city that that we might not necessarily see um in my neighborhood. You you framed the question around um the recent spate of shootings in Northwest and then tied that to jobs. So I I I want to address um the sort of underlying uh implication of that question, which is the um when a sort of lack of hope leads to um to violence. And I think there, I'd be remiss if if I didn't say that the city has a lot of roles to play in that process from uh from early childhood education and making sure that kids have access to resources um from early in life. Making sure that we have robust mental health programs to deal with um with anxiety and frustration. Making sure we're partnering with community organizations um so that we're not reinventing the wheel, as Brandon said. When when uh offering people alternatives to violence. As to jobs in particular, I will echo uh what Brandon and Jess said, which is that I'm inclined to partner with labor. Uh and to to make sure that we that we have, we have our own access to apprentice programs inside uh unions uh in the city. Um and that in those, there are incentives to hiring
Ten seconds.
Individuals with a record. I particularly on any construction project that has city funding in it. I'm a strong proponent of project labor agreements.
That's time.
Include local hire petitions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Now, Mr. Shea, unmute for your two minute answer.
Well, thank you, and I uh really appreciate these type of questions. The reason why I can humble myself to them is because I'm the eighth of thirteen siblings. Uh my mom was a widow and we had to learn how to formulate a community, not only in our home, but throughout the community. And during that time in point, we probably own somewhere near ten businesses amongst our family alone. What I learned from that is really the sustainability of businesses and middle classes really comes at the heart of the community. Wanting that to happen and the government making sure they understand the voice of the community to make that happen. In my opinion, uh looking at District Seven, especially in the South Lake District, I think we have a golden opportunity to create a slew of jobs between new opportunities with companies and and different forms of employees coming in with with shadow programs that can be created for young people who are attending PHS Blair and John Muir. There's tons of opportunity that can be made, but it has to be something that's not speculated. We have to really craft a way to get businesses back in our community and then create a real plain or even playing ground that will benefit not only community. It will it will benefit blacks. It will benefit Hispanics. It will benefit the city. And I say this because I've lived it. These are my lived experiences that I'm sharing at this moment, and I know they work. And not only I know that they work when I was growing up, but we also implemented some of those when uh recession as the chair of Northwest, we in implemented uh shadow programs, uh local community programs. Myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Lyon, you have the option of a one minute rebuttal.
No, I'm good. I very much appreciated that answer. Thank you.
Okay, uh back to Martin.
I believe uh
I believe he still has a one minute rebuttal if he if he wants it.
Okay, oh, even if uh the uh pressure button, gotcha. Go ahead, Mr. Shea.
This is back to Mr. Shea.
You're muted.
This is back. Thank you.
Okay. I was saying earlier that the beauty of community is bringing something consistent and solid to our community. It's very difficult hearing all the speculation that goes on, especially as we've experienced recessions, COVID and other financial challenges we've had. We can start small. We can start effective. And I believe we can do this in District Seven by building on businesses that make it work for everyone and provide jobs. And that's what I hope to see as City Council for District Seven take place and not speculation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now back to Martin.
Thank you. Uh we'll move on to question five, and that will be asked by Mr. Dixon.
Hello again, everybody. Uh my question is, even those who are charged with propelling the process, including the civilian oversight committee, appear to be disappointed with where the city stands on improving police accountability. Does the panel need more clout? Does the structure need a shakeout? What is next for the Oversight Committee in your opinion? Councilman Kennedy, please unmute yourself and two minutes.
Well, when I first um suggested that we needed some form of oversight of the Pasadena Police Department, the then Chair of the Public Safety Committee mentioned to me that there's really no appetite for that, but I pressed forward anyway. And ultimately got, I think, one or at least three members of the City Council to vote for some form of oversight of the Pasadena Police Department. There are extraordinary constraints on uh the Pasadena City Council that come from the police, police officer bill of rights. We have to abide by that, and we also have to abide by the charter of the city of Pasadena. Those are constraints, guardrails that unless the voters get directly involved, it would be difficult to overcome. But nevertheless, I didn't give up. I kept moving forward, pressing for uh oversight of the Pasadena Police Department. And what really precipitated the success more than any one thing that happened in the world was the horrific death of George Floyd. And it got most of my, you got all of my city council members on the same page to actually vote for civilian oversight of the Pasadena Police Department. Yes, I agree that it needs more teeth, if you will. This was never an end all. This was a start of a process where I initially got no support at all and then got a form of oversight. And we are now getting ready to select the independent auditor. And I think the independent auditor will offer leadership for the body and for the City Council as well.
Seconds.
And we also still have the Public Safety Committee, which is chaired by the Mayor of the City of Pasadena. So there's still work to be done. I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Lamar, will you please unmute and will you share if you believe the commission needs more clout? Does the structure need a shakeout? What is next in your opinion? Two minutes.
Thank you. I definitely think that the commission needs more clout. Um but let me start by saying this. The only reason why we have a civilian oversight committee is because of the community. The community made it known that we wanted one, even after the shooting of George Floyd and even after the killing of Anthony McLean uh or the the knee on the back of George Floyd and the killing of Anthony McLean. We have made it clear that we wanted it. The civilian oversight uh commission is now in place because of the community, because of the voices of the community. And I think we have to go back to the basics of empowering the voices of the community. It was the community that said it. It was the community that brung it out. It was the community that was marching day in and day out. Six hundred, seven hundred people to City Hall saying what we wanted and what we needed. It was the community that came out every single Monday to talk to City Hall uh to our council, to our city council about the needs of the community and the wants of the community. And one of those wants was the civ- civilian oversight commission. And so I want to make it very clear that it is because of the community that it is now in place because of the power of of our voices and because of the power of unity. The next thing I think that we have to do is that we can't just leave it up to the commission. I think the commission has to be in partnership and is vice versa with our city council. That our commission can not only be the only people that has teeth, but our city council has to raise up their voices like uh Councilmember Tyrone Hampton does every single week for accountability with our officers. We have yet to see any accountability with our officers in Pasadena. And so we have to have people in these seats in city council who are going to speak up every single week until we see the accountability that the community really wants to see. Lives are definitely at stake, so we have to do something. We have to do something and we have to do something now. Thank you.
Councilman John Kennedy, you have the option at a rebuttal if you would like. Please unmute yourself and the timer will begin.
Thank you very much. For six years, I labored not alone to find a pathway forward for community oversight of the Pasadena Police Department. This was before the death of George Floyd. It has always been for good legislation that involves the community that the community is involved right from the beginning. No doubt about it. But it took the leadership of one council member to convince the other council members and the mayor that it was the right thing to do. My appointee to the Oversight Commission is Don Matthews, someone who lost a son to police violence and was in fact a training officer
Ten seconds.
Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, critically important for the leadership of that body. And yes, we are going to listen to that body and they will affect public policy in the city of Pasadena. So thank you.
Mr. Lamar, uh if you would like to say something, please unmute yourself and you will have a minute.
Only thing that I'll say is, I believe that in in Pasadena and communities around, we have to understand that one person cannot do it all. It has to be a community effort, and we've seen that not only with the civilian oversight commission, but we also seen it with rent control. Being that rent control just received over twenty thousand signatures and fifteen of those uh sign- fifteen thousand of signatures were actually accounted for. And now we're celebrating that we are, that rent control is going to be on the ballot. So it's the community that pushes our efforts forward, and I think that's important for all of us to remember and understand.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rivas, I can repeat the question if you would like, but will you share your opinion on what is next for the Oversight Commission?
I'm good. Um I think number one, first off, the the commission should have the full extent of power allowed under the law. As was raised before, there's a lot of limitations, unfortunately, but whatever they can have, they should have. And if there are areas where they think they should have more, then requires a change in law. We should advocate for those changes to be made at the state level. It's still early. Um the commission got off to a slow start, unfortunately. You know, that takes some time to ramp up with the IPA that was initially appointed. And then unfortunately, that IPA left to take a different job. And so we just, um I believe it's just on this Monday or the previous Monday, uh approved a new IPA. So hopefully, they will be able to get up and running with the commission. Um sorry, uh they'll be able to get up and running with the commission. I do want to mention with the the IPA, though, um the first, uh I was proud to be uh the only council member when the first APA came up for approval in uh last year, that I was the only council member to oppose their their being appointed because they served as a defense attorney for uh law enforcement for um over for about a decade. And so I was proud to to point that out and and acknowledge that that is not the ideal person to serve as an APA. And the new IPA that was selected and we approved uh has a much better track record, I think, and will uh and will have the will have the um uh I'm sorry, will get the uh earn the trust of the community much more easily for that reason. And then the last thing I just want to point out is that the uh a new issue has come up that just that the commission just took up and will come back to the council, and that's the police use of military equipment. And by law, by state law, that is basically teed up for the commission to really sink its teeth into and provide its input and for the council to then adopt policy based
Ten seconds.
Communities input in general. So I look forward to to doing that when that comes back up to the council in a few uh few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Mr. Shea, please unmute yourself and you will have two minutes to share your opinion on what's next for the Oversight Commission.
Well, I I like to, again, thank you for this uh question, because if anyone has been following me, they know I do a daily advocacy uh about the police accountability. And the reason for that is because my lived history here in Pasadena has been quite extensive and certainly as a as the uh Chair of the Northwest and Commissioner uh over the last four uh terms has shown me that it's imperative to have the ability to hold police accountable when police are required to have such action uh asserted against them. I I love our police department. I think we have a great police department as a structure. But I believe we have some systemic challenges within the department that needs to be addressed. And if we don't have the courage through our new commission to to uh exercise that, then they will not be effective. And I say this because uh this commission is not the first time we've tried to have a oversight panel or body to to uh try and hold police accountable. That's a very difficult job uh to do because of the power and the union uh that the police has. What I would encourage is the voters make sure that they have someone who understands this. And and if they haven't lived these experiences in our community and really know how to go about finding a balanced uh engagement with the police, it will continue to repeat itself because the commission that we have did not, did not just come about because of George Floyd. It really came about because of Anthony McLean. That's when they voted it right after his his death. And I know that that was a result of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Lyon, if you are unmuted, uh you have two minutes to provide an answer yourself.
Thank you. I I think it's too soon to know if we need to do to make any structural changes with the the commission. They, I think they had their first meeting last October. So we're only seven months in. And as Councilmember Rivas pointed out, uh two months in, we lost the independent police auditor and we just hired one this week. So um i- in many ways, their work is really just getting started. So I think we need to to watch and wait and see how it works and be willing to tweak the system as we go. I think the real proof uh of of the of the effectiveness of the system as it's designed now will be after we will know after we hire a new police chief. And and you know, for for me, it feels very important that the police chief be willing to really partner with the civilian oversight commission to have a a a meaningful and frank and transparent dialogue with the community. If that happens, then I think our, the current structure of the commission could be great. If that doesn't happen, that's what we need to look at, whether the the commission needs a different kind of authority. But I, you know, really, our work in this area is just getting started. So I don't think we know yet if 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 any changes need to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, if you have a rebuttal, you
Yes, I do. With all due respect to uh to the comment made earlier, it is absolutely imperative that the commission has the authority for anyone to say that they should it is absolutely imperative that the commission has the authority for anyone to say that they should not have the authority to to make the uh the necessary recommendations, even if at least a foreign officer, that is absurd because the op- the police will be policing themselves. That will defeat the whole objective of this commission. And if he doesn't understand it or people don't understand it, this commission is not going to last. As I said, we've we've been down this road before. And I think that the uh commission is a great group of individuals, very outstanding. I'm totally impressed. I've reached out to almost all of them uh to commend them because it's a great collection of thinkers. Let them think and let them use their experiences to to bring about the the voice of the people and the actions that they've been given by the the charter of this commission. Thank you.
Mr. Lyon, if you have a rebuttal, you will have one minute as well.
Well, I believe Mr. Mr. Shea might have misheard my answer, but I certainly didn't say anything about taking authority away from the from the commission. Uh, the commission now has the authority to to uh look into um anything it deems appropriate. The that's really the only authority it doesn't have now is is subpoena power. And it remains to be seen if if we need to offer that authority. Uh, but I certainly, I I think we have crafted a commission that um that has sufficient authority to do the work it needs to do if the city is is cooperating. So when we have a new city manager and a new chief of police, um, that'll be when we really, when we really see how the city is interacting with the commission. Thanks.
Thank you. We will send it back over to Gordon.
Okay. That's me, Martin. Thank you. Um, next question will come from uh Justin Chapman. This is question number six.
Thank you. Violent crimes have stunned the community in the past year and beyond. What steps need to be taken to assure that the city is safe? Let's start with Mr. Lamar. Please unmute yourself for your two-minute answer.
Thank you. Um, I think, well, I don't have to think. District three has has been the most affected by uh gun violence in the entire um community since the last year. Uh, we've had the 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 killing uh of the thirteen-year-old who was murdered uh inside his home playing his own game. And then we had the murder of Jamal sitting outside of his own house. And then we had the murder of the fifteen-year-old sitting in the car. Um, and that's just the murders. We're we're not even talking about the shootings. So something has to be done. Um, and here's what I think has to be done. I think we have to go back to a prevention intervention uh structure. Um, and I am the only one uh that would be on council that has that background currently. In my position right now, I have that that uh that background of serving um over thirty-one communities throughout the United States of America in my position on prevention intervention um and crime reduction. And we have to put people with lived experience in the community to help combat uh violence in our community. That's number one. Number two, I think we have to have more um engagement with our community members in the community. Something that I expressed to the last chief on a personal conversation is I think that we need it. And I heard some people talk about it yesterday um at the public safety meeting. But we need more officers to be on our in our parks, uh and not in their cars, but in our in bikes. And I'm actually happy to see that actually happening. Um, right now, that's happening to have engagement and they're not uh scared or impulse uh impulsive because of a car pulling up, but they'd rather have more engagement with bicycle uh police. And then the last thing I'll say is I think that we need um more park safety in our communities um in in our parks that are specifically for parks. You know, we see park safety driving around the city, but I think that they need to be in our parks and in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kennedy, unmute for your two-minute answer on how to keep the city safe.
Well, first of all, I have a real background as it relates to being a former deputy chief of police in a community that had the highest uh murder rate in the United States is in the top ten. And that was in Richmond, Virginia. I was deputy chief of police for administrative services, which was a civilian position that had the training, the hiring of computer services, property and evidence, all of the areas of policing that are pertinent in terms of helping a new police chief understand their role vis a vis the community. It is great that we're going to select a new city manager, but we also have to let that city manager know that we need the right type of police chief to serve over our police department and the young men and women who serve the police department. We have a great police department. Are there some issues? Are there some bad apples? Probably yes. But the super majority of our police officers go to work every day in and out and do a great job for this community. As it relates to the violence or the uptick of violence, the kind of violence we have seen in some respect has been random. And that's the most difficult violence to arrest. So what it's going to take is the community engage with the police department, see something, say something, and we actually get results when that happens. To all the families in District Three who has lost uh lost loved ones in this kind of senseless violence, our heart goes out to you in a serious way from not just me, from the whole community. We have the opportunity to teach intentional civility amongst our young people. We must do that. It has a positive impact.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lamar, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. I I'll say that if the expertise was present, we wouldn't have all the shootings that we've been having in our district. Um, and I think I say that with with all due respect. We've had too many shootings, one too many shootings. And at this point, just like accountability with our officers, our community has to have accountability with our community. Enough is enough. There's too many shootings that has taken place. Um, and lives are at stakes. Lives are literally at stake. I lost a cousin last week from gut to gun violence. These are lives and they're at stake and we have to do something. Not after the twentieth shooting, we have to do something after the first shooting. And so, you know, I appreciate everything that was said, but we have to do more than what has been done because lives are definitely at stake at this moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, a one-minute rebuttal.
Uh, no question about it. Something more must be done. But you have to recognize that we're dealing with ghost guns, the the plethora of guns that are on the streets. We also need to recognize that the city of Pasadena had the forced thought to hire Mark Sutton, Ricky Pickens, and Deandre Scott, men who have real life experiences that can serve as interventionists to interrupt the violence, to talk to the young men and women who are engaged in violence and show them that there's another pathway forward. Yes, we have park safety officers now because the city council approved them yesterday uh Monday. Also, it has been my mission, not of late, but since I've been on the council, to tell our police officers, you must get out of your police vehicle, engage the community in conversation to make the community safer. That's just common sense. I'm still demanding that and it will occur.
Thank you. Now to Councilmember Rivas for your two-minute answer on how to keep the city safe.
Thank you. And I'll start by apologize. I had a little bit of a scrap distraction during the last question. Hopefully that won't happen again. Um, first, in the short term, you know, whenever an incident happens, or just in general, as we're dealing with these situations, there's a number of things that we we need to do and when we have been doing. And that includes violence interrupters and gang interventionists who do make a a profound impact in reaching out and having those conversations with folks, cooling temperatures down and making sure that cycle retaliation has a stopping point and we don't see the back and forth continue. Um, temporary increased patrols, we see often immediately after an incident. I think those are important to to watch out for for any additional flare-ups that may happen. I know neighbors uh are very encouraged to see those. Um, and additional limited surveillance, you know, when it when it calls for it in very specific and limited situations, I think that's appropriate. I don't, but I think it needs to be limited. I don't see it as a a a prolonged or or permanent thing, but in response to in a situation that's happened. But I think we also, oh, and I'm sorry, before I move on, also park safety officers, which are part of our our budget this year to add two more. And I believe one of them will be dedicated uh permanently or full-time or spend the bulk of their time at Villa Park in my district. And I think that's really, really crucial to have that presence there in the park, a positive presence, not an officer with a gun, just someone who's there to be around and have an eyes have eyes on what's going on and establish those relationships with the the neighbors who are in the park on a day daily basis and really get to know people. I think that's really important, having people, having our officers uh and park safety specialists just be there in the park um on foot and walking around and getting to know people. Um, all those things are great and we're gonna do those when we need them. Um, but we have to recognize that those are not solutions to the underlying problem. Uh, in the long term, we have to work to ensure that our city is one where everyone can thrive and where young people are not drawn to gangs or violence in the first place to stop the cycle. Um, and that is a matter of good jobs and affordable housing, which I'm sure we're gonna get to in one of our our next questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Over to you, Mr. Lyon, for your two-minute answer.
Thank you. Um, I violence is is a function to a greater or lesser degree of hopelessness and despair. Um, and so there there are the the thing, the actions that we can take on the pre-violent side to try to combat hopelessness and despair. And then there are the actions we take in the post-violent side to to create um safety and and stability. Uh, on the pre-violent side, and this is the side I where I think our work really, really ought to be focused. Um, you know, we're a city with a public health department. Um, we're in the midst of a national and local uh mental health crisis coming out of the pandemic. Um, and we should be taking that on in a proactive and affirmative way. Um, we should be partnering with community organizations um for um intervention uh at at the earliest possible level because um I think despair sets in early in communities of need. And so um a- as quickly as we can show opportunities that are meaningful and real, um, the the less likely that a kid ends up uh in in a violent situation. Um, I think on the policing side, on the on the post-incident side, it is critical that officers are visible in the community, not just in their cars, but on the streets, in the parks, um, in in and getting to know people. And we are a long way right now from having um most of our police department regarded as trusted partners in the community, but that's where we need to be. Um, and you know, it while we are such an unaffordable city, that's hard to do. Not one Pasadena police department, police officer lives in the city of Pasadena. And in part, that's because this city is not affordable. If officers were our neighbors, we could begin to build a different kind of relationship. And I do hope we get to the affordability aspect on this uh with the next question.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shea, unmute for your two-minute answer.
Wow. All I can say is wow.
The discussion is not that complicated. It really isn't. I mean, I'm hearing people all over the all over the floor. Basically, the police department needs to have a good relationship with the community, a good, easy outreach program, uh transparency. Uh, those things mitigate some of the the attitudes and experiences that the residents in these uh impacted community has to deal with just from the police. Then if we look at the side of economic disparity, yeah, and I hope people are very sensitive because the way some of this stuff is coming across is not taken very well. People want the best in life. But when there is inequity, you're not going to get it and there's going to be reaction. The best way to curb that is start with respecting people and presenting opportunities to where everybody can have the same quality of life. That's how I grew up. If you respected me, you respected your neighbors, we all, we all win. Pasadena lost that somewhere because we we're having these kind of discussions. Those were not the discussions when I was growing up. And the reason why is because we had true community. We had public servants. We had police who who served to protect. We had, we had uh leaders who actually led and not had self-interests in mind. Those things are imperative to have a strong community and and that's why I'm running.
Ten seconds.
I've seen this all my life and I continue to know that it does exist. It doesn't require all of this speculation. You just do it. Make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon, you have the option of a one-minute rebuttal.
No rebuttal.
Mr. Shea, would you like to take your one-minute rebuttal?
I absolutely would. There is no greater city in America than Pasadena. And it will only stay that way if we continue to vote in leaders and people who have a passion for this community to make sure it stays a great community. That's why I'm here tonight, to make sure you hear that and act on it with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now back to moderator Gordon.
Thank you. That's Mr. Gordon or Martin. Thank you. Um, we we will move over on to question seven, um, and that will be uh Brennan Dixon.
What's up, everybody? Once again, uh, my question is number seven. Gentrification is running rampant in communities across Pasadena and Alzina, both part of Pasadena unified. Some theory it is tearing apart the fabric of our close-knit communities. Give us your thoughts on how we can ensure longtime community members remain in town and how we could possibly use the phenomenon to improve communities and schools. Councilman Kennedy, please unmute yourself and provide a two-minute answer.
Well, first of all, uh, I don't believe that you can use gentrification to increase or to make things better. Gentrification is a reflection of affordability. People irrespective of race, they live where they can afford to live. And what we're seeing in Pasadena is two couples, some nuclear, uh, some uh same-sex couples coming to Pasadena who have very good incomes, two incomes, and can afford to live in a city where we're seeing the median price for a home to be somewhere close to one million dollars. This is unbelievable, historic, never seen in the history of Pasadena. But what city government can do is provide resources to make housing more affordable in the city of Pasadena. Specifically, we had a program called Neighborhood Housing Services that provided silent seconds for people to buy homes, particularly first home buyers. Also, there's a program called NACA that will provide the down payment for those individuals who will go through a pre uh ownership program and finish and receive a certificate. Having that certificate oftentimes allows you to get the down payment for a house, whether it's in Pasadena or in the county of Los Angeles. I don't see gentrification as something positive. I see gentrification as something that the community as a whole needs to work to prevent occurring so we can keep a great diversity that exists in the city of Pasadena. I hope there'll be other opportunities to address this issue a little bit more in depth. Thank you.
Mr. Lamar, please unmute yourself and provide a two-minute answer.
Thank you. Um, I think uh I think we have to preserve the culture of Pasadena that we have, the diversity of the culture that we have in Pasadena. And for the last ten years or more, we have seen more people uh move out of Pasadena than than ever before, who've been born here, raised here, and ultimately just cannot afford to live here. And I say that about myself, especially as a millennial um who is, you know, now has a fiance and one day would like to buy in Pasadena. I know that right now we're not in a position to do so. Even with two incomes, even with two great jobs, we're just not in the position to do so. And so I think that we have to create more opportunities for people to be able And so I think that we have to create more opportunities for people to be able to stay here. And one of the things that I'm very proud of is to endorse the rent control. We have to have rent control in Pasadena to keep people housed here. And I think I encourage everybody, I know some of you all have been doing it, some probably have not been doing it, but I encourage you to go out yourself and knock on doors and canvass and talk to your neighbors and see those neighbors who can barely afford to pay their rent. See those neighbors who can, who was thinking about either paying their rent or buying food for their family, paying their rent or buying clothes for their family. There's people out here who just cannot afford to live here in Pasadena and it is a shame. And we have to do something about it and we have to do something about it now. My whole thing is I, I welcome everybody to come to Pasadena. But more than anything, I want to find a way for the people who are already here to be able to stay here and live here and live here comfortably, not only to pay their rent. And the thing that we have to think about is people are not only paying rent and mortgages, but we also have car notes. We also have insurance. We also have to buy groceries. We have all these things that
Ten seconds.
And rent is just too high currently and we have to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Mr. Kennedy, you have a one minute rebuttal.
Well, when I was a kid, there were 24,000 African Americans living in the city of Pasadena. Now there are less than 10,000. And in large measure, it always has been a question of affordability related to that. As it relates to rent control, what rent control is a well-intentioned bad idea. The explosive increases in rent is worrisome for all of us and a destructive, life-altering event for those priced out of the market. It creates tremendous pressure to intervene in a direct way to control and limit further increases. State law imposes a ceiling right now on the annual increases, but that is not restrictive enough for proponents of more rigorous local rent control. However, virtually every academic review of rent control as a technique
Ten seconds.
To improve housing conditions has concluded that it is a well-intentioned bad idea. Thank you.
Mr. Lamar, you have a one minute rebuttal if you would like.
Thank you. I think for me, rent control is an amazing idea because there has not been any other solution that came to the table to, to, to help renters. And I think that's what it is. Until we have another solution to help renters to stop making rent go up so much more over 8%, 9% then this is the only solution that we have on the table. And, you know, I understand that more affordable housing is being built, but also these affordable houses, some of these are under 500 square feet and the family can't fit in those. So we have to have affordable housing for everyone, not just for one group, but for everyone. And I think that's so important. The next thing I'll say is, and you know, there's been this combat between landlords and renters. And I think what we really have to do in the city of Pasadena, what I would like to see is for us to create a program for mom and pop landlords to help them to be able to re, to, to help them to sustain their units by also keeping it affordable, by making a promise to keep it affordable for Pasadena. And there's more conversation that can definitely happen within that. Thank you.
Thank you too. Councilwoman Rivas, will you give us on your thoughts on how we can ensure longtime community members remain in town and how we can improve communities and schools for them?
Yeah, keeping Pasadena's housed is absolutely one of my top priorities. And I mean that in two ways. Of course, we don't want people to fall into homelessness, which is a big topic and I'm sure we'll get into it. But also keeping them here in Pasadena. Young adults who grew up here, working families and seniors are being pushed out of Pasadena by our insane housing prices and rental and rents. This is unacceptable. So I, I am proud of what the city has done recently, over the past year to convert existing market rate housing to workforce or middle income housing. And we should continue to be open to new and innovative approaches like this. So through that process, we were able to convert over 1,000 units of really nice market rate housing. And those rents were instantly brought down to levels that middle income renters can continue to afford moving into the future. So we're talking about people like teachers and construction workers, tradespeople, young professionals, folks that traditionally make too much for affordable housing or traditional affordable housing, but can't afford to buy a home, can't afford the market rate rent. So I'm really excited that we were able to do that and I hope we continue to explore new ideas like that. I also support the ballot initiative for rent control. I view it as a common sense way to keep Pasadena's housed in, in our community. It's simply going to limit rent increases to 75% of inflation every year, which will typically work out. I guess in a normal year, maybe not this year, but around 2% to 3%. And those are reasonable amounts that people can afford and that don't amount to de facto eviction notices, which is, that's what pushes people out of our city. So those are a few items that I would like to continue to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We move over to Alan Shea. Will you please unmute yourself and ready for a two minute answer?
Well, I think this is a very complicated question and I speak from a political scientist perspective. Also a licensed real estate broker for over 25 years, business owner over 40 years. And the reason I say that is because the gentrification phenomenon is a result of demand. If the leaders in Pasadena cannot create some kind of equitable sustainability for African Americans or minorities, that's just gonna be a natural evolution. And I'm sorry to say, I say this because that was one of the reasons I became a commissioner for four terms in the Northwest, was to try and stabilize that and to test it, to go through recessionary cycles to see how people can retain their homes. And I had to negotiate with a lot of lenders for people to keep their homes and do a lot of begging for folks not to sell their homes so they can stay a part of the community. But even with all of those efforts that helped to sustain, we still lost a lot. And that comes because we have to find a formula that works. And until you get leaders who have a lived experience with those type of incidents, with those type of cycles, it's not, it's not gonna change. And you have to be in tune with history. The, the only time that African Americans became middle class was only because of the push between 1948 to 1968. So after the 1967 Fannie Mae bill was passed, then blacks were able to afford houses, get decent jobs and become middle class. If we're ready to implement those type of, of movements again for the next 20 to 40 years, so be it.
Ten seconds.
I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen. We're gonna have to look at ways to be creative and you need people who understand that. So that's why it's so important to make sure people think clear on how to approach it. Thank you.
Mr. Lyon, you are unmuted. We are ready for your answer.
Thank you. I, I think the lack of affordable workforce, so-called workforce housing is the biggest issue facing the city today. We, we are losing economic diversity by, by the day. And if we don't have economic diversity, we don't have workforce diversity. And eventually we can't be a thriving city if that happens. We have 75,000 workers in the city and the vast majority have to live outside the city, which means they have to come here from further and further away. That has economic impacts, that has environmental impacts. And eventually it means that people are not gonna wanna work in the city if they can't get here easily. And we have to address it. I've been out knocking on doors for eight months and talking to voters and I can't tell you how many times people have said to me, oh, I wish I could vote for you. I'm moving out of the city. And not just renters, it's homeowners, it's condo owners, it's renters of apartments, renters of single family homes, can't afford to live in the city. We need to address it. The issue of gentrification is one that I have dealt with a lot as the vice chair of the planning commission and one that we try to confront. We still very clearly see the lingering effects of redlining in this city. You can, the, the red line is traceable across the city. And trying to offset those effects without creating neighborhoods that are ripe for people of greater means to come in and swoop up is a difficult balance and one we try to take on all the time in our zone. I will say this is, the gentrification is the reason that I have so strongly oppose SB 9, which is the bill that allows
Ten seconds.
Single family lot to be split into two and then a duplex built on each. It doesn't require any units to be affordable and what we're gonna see is neighborhoods getting bought up and converted to more expensive housing. Thanks.
Mr. Shea, we are ready for your rebuttal if you would like to provide one, one minute.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, again, housing gentrification are difficult issues. Affordable housing issues are divided in so many different ways. I would get into it a lot with the housing department on how it really functions. If you're trying to create affordable housing for minorities, then, you know, in my opinion, there needs to be an assertive effort to make sure that's the intended purpose. If you're just trying to create affordable housing for the general public, that's another facet that should be focused in on. Without really zeroing in on a real campaign or strategy, you're gonna lose in both ends because even if affordable housing is created and
Ten seconds.
It goes to people who are not black and it goes to whites and you're gonna get the gentrification. If you want blacks to, to, to stabilize themselves, there's gotta be a mechanism in place.
That's time.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyon, would you like a rebuttal?
I would. Thank you. I don't think we're gonna get to affordable, to, to the number of affordable units we need in this city without public investment in affordable housing. Right now, our system of 80% market rate with 20% affordable units is not making a dent in our need for workforce housing. So I think we need in public investment at the federal, state, county and city levels in affordable housing. And then we need to figure out where we're gonna put housing. So that's along our transit corridors where we can take more density along our major thoroughfares. But for, for this city, I think the biggest answer is gonna be in, in coming up with a comprehensive adaptive reuse ordinance so that we can convert existing underutilized commercial space, retail space, institutional space and industrial space
Ten seconds.
Housing that is affordable at every income level.
Thank you. And I believe we are ready for the lightning round with Mr. Chapman.
Great. So these are 30 second answers with no rebuttals. Do you support giving priority for moving into the 710 freeway, so-called stub land to Black and Asian households, many of whom were pushed out of the area when the property was acquired by the state? First up, Mr. Lamar.
Yes, I do. I do believe that it should be priority for them, for us, times a thousand.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
Absolutely. African Americans, Japanese Americans and Latino Americans see the butt of what was called urban renewal, which was just really Negro removal, Latino removal and Japanese American removal. We have 52 acres that are going to be re-appropriated to the city of Pasadena. It presents an opportunity for this city to actually do justice and we must do it. This is our opportunity to show the world that justice can be done
Ten seconds.
In the city of roses. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Councilmember Rivas.
Yes, absolutely. I know the city, we are already doing something similar with our affordable housing priorities and we have a pilot program that prioritizes folks who have been pushed out. So I absolutely believe that same idea should apply to anything built in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
I do also support, including anyone who is from a community that was historically disadvantaged by the, the 710 eminent domain action. That doesn't necessarily mean offering the existing units, which I understood you to ask, to, to anyone, because the, the, those units are gonna need a long conversation. They're historic units, but they are largely in great disrepair.
Thank you. Mr. Shea.
You wanna repeat your question because I had a phone call come in while you were
Absolutely. Do you support giving priority for moving into the 710 freeway stub land to Black and Asian households, many of whom were pushed out of the area when the property was acquired by the state?
I, I do. I'm, I'm one of those recipients, or I should say, one of those, those victims, I'll put it that way, who, who experienced that because we actually lived off of Pasadena Avenue when we first moved to Pasadena and had to move because of that, the 17 coming in. I, I just would hope that
Ten seconds.
In, in theory, we can talk about it, but in practice, we can carry this out to be a true mission that Pasadena has achieved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we're going over to Brennan now for the next lightning round question.
Hello, my question is short and sweet. Do you support rent control? And we are heading back to Alan Shea.
Well, my, my take on rent control is that the voice of the people need to make that determination. I say that because we've put forth a statewide rent control. And from my analysis of looking at value, I look at market value. And I also look at market value when we have a downed system.
Ten seconds.
When we had the recession, we had lost 50% of the value and we reduced our rents down to that effect. I think renters need to understand that if that were to happen in reverse, they would still
That's time.
With their current contract. Thank you.
Mr. Lyon, we are ready when you are.
I do. I was a strong proponent of putting this measure on the ballot. I think reasonable minds can disagree about rent control. There's a fair amount of data that suggests that over time, it actually takes rents above market. But at this moment in time in Pasadena, I think what we need desperately is stability and predictability in rents. And until we come up with a system that works better
Ten seconds.
And we have a proposal that actually provides for the needs also of housing providers. I think this is a reasonable solution at the moment.
Mr. Lamar, over to you.
Yes, I do support rent control and I support rent control 100%. And until there's another solution that has brought, been brought to the table, I think this is the only solution that we have right now in regards to rent control. I think that we have to have something to be able to keep our neighbors here and this is the step that we have currently. And I'm glad to be able to say
Ten seconds.
That my campaign has supported to help gather signatures and was the first person on the candidacy to actually endorse this rent control. So I definitely appreciate that.
Time.
Ms. Rivas.
Yes. Yes, I've endorsed the rent control campaign and I'm just proud to be an advocate for renters who make up the majority of District 5 residents and the majority of our city.
Mr. Kennedy, do you support rent control?
No, I do not support rent control. It's a well-intentioned bad idea. I do believe my initiative to build 3,000 affordable units with 15% of those dedicated to the extremely low income will have a better impact than rent control. Rent control reduces construction of new supply and discourages investment and that's not something that we want to do. It is
Ten seconds.
discourages in reinvestment, maintenance of supply, the limiting return for owners thereby damaging housing conditions. We can do better.
That's time.
I will send it back to Mr. Chapman for the next lightning round question.
Thank you. Should affordable housing be allowed and encouraged on church property? First up, Mr. Lamar.
Yes, I, I do think so. As we've seen in, especially after COVID, we, we don't see the same amount of people going to churches. We don't see the same amount of people using buildings, commercial buildings. And so my answer is yes, I think that it should definitely be used for unhoused or unused church locations.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
This is part of the Great Commission. We have an opportunity to be a part of the Great Commission by allowing church and other ecumenical, ecumenical lands be used to build affordable housing. Absolutely. The whole community of Pasadena needs to get behind this effort.
Period. Thank you. Councilmember Rivas.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I was grateful to see that this passed through the Planning Commission a week or two ago and will be at, at the council, I believe, on May 23rd. So I'm very eager to, for this to come before the council.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
Yes, we have been working for two years in the Planning Commission to come up with a sound, workable and, and viable plan to create housing on religious institutions. and, and viable plan to create housing on religious institution lands. And hopefully, it's a program that we can, a model that we can expand to institutional lands like colleges in the near future. I will say with, with the religious lands, there is an important First Amendment consideration that we gotta make sure that, that these facilities remain manageable, and we came up with a solution for that as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Shea.
Well, my four terms is Commissioner Northwest to try and empower a, a means in which affordable housing can be created for those residents in Northwest, which talking in general to the city of Pasadena. We're adding another dimension to it, and if we're talking about people of color, you'll
Ten seconds.
other, another challenge. When it comes to what are we gonna do and how we're gonna do it, I think we need more specifics because these things are just being blown out and not really clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. And back over to Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Justin. My question for Mr. Shea first is how can Pasadena do its part combat climate change and conserve water?
Well, I, I think we're, we're moving forward with that in that direction. We've reduced our watering down to two days a week now. I see a lot, a lot of people in District Seven, especially when I'm out walking every day, walking and bicycling. So those, those are the first steps. If we start looking at where we're gonna be in
Ten seconds.
twenty-five with, with electric cars, that's gonna mitigate the emission from our engine vehicles. So we're, we're working toward it.
Mr. Lyon, how can Pasadena do its part to combat climate change and conserve water?
So this is a major component of my campaign and a thing I really care about in the city. The first thing is that we need to step up the timeline to get into a majority renewables portfolio. We're on track to do that by twenty-thirty now. I think we can do that as much as four years sooner without a great cost to the city. We have traditionally created and then shut down conservation incentive programs because no one uses them, because no one knows about them. So we need things like gray water conversion programs. We need a better solar buyback, buyback program.
That's time.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Lamar, please share your thoughts. Thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you. I agree. I do think we need to promote and expand our conservation programs. I think that we need to expand our food recycling programs to not just homeowners, but we have to find a way to expand them to also apartment and multifamily units as well. And then I also think that we definitely have to build more charging areas. And of course, I mean, I sweat a lot, so I need lots of, so we need trees, a lot more trees for the city of Pasadena so we can have shade.
Councilwoman Rivas, how can Pasadena combat climate change?
Well, when it comes to power production, we have to continue to push, to shift our reliance on fossil fuels to renewable energy and to make sure we are trying to push that forward as quickly as we possibly can. When it comes to water, we of course have to encourage more conservation. We have to capture more stormwater to replenish the Raymond Basin, our groundwater. We have to maintain our infrastructure, which is aging, and we need to explore new version, I'm sorry, new methods to, to conserve water, like I believe Jason mentioned, in terms of recycling and gray water use. So those are a few things we need to focus on.
John Kennedy, thirty seconds to share your thoughts, please.
I wrote the original recycling ordinance for the city of Pasadena. The whole objective is to reduce the carbon imprint, and that's what we're doing. We must get people out of their cars, and so we must build housing around transit so they don't need a car. We need to move quicker to twenty-thirty in terms of obtaining our
Ten seconds.
renewable energy from renewables and enact zero waste in the city of Pasadena. That would do greatly to reduce the carbon imprint in the city of Pasadena. Thank you.
Back over to Justin for another question.
Thank you very much. Did the city drop the ball in the way it handled Cheryl Moody and Jason Clausen serving as interim police chiefs? First up, Mr. Lamar.
You guys would do this to me. Um, yes, I mean, ultimately, I believe that Cheryl Moody should have been in place as our next police chief because she was next in line. So you go up the order, she's definitely, then, you know, she goes up in line. But at the end of the day, we have to trust who we put in place.
Ten seconds.
The city, the city council have put somebody in place, and this was their decision, and we have to trust that. And so if we want a different decision, we have to have different leaders.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
Absolutely, we dropped the ball. There's no question that Cheryl Moody should have had an opportunity to be the full acting chief of police for the city of Pasadena, just like John Perez had that opportunity. There was no reason for bifurcation. I did not support it privately, and I did not support it publicly. And I think she should have had that opportunity, and she was not afforded that opportunity. And why would she want to report to one of her subordinates? Jason Clausen
Time.
was one of her subordinates.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivas.
So that was a policy that our interim city manager applied across the board, not just with the police department. So I know it was also with the assistant city manager position and also with the HR department head and perhaps maybe another department head that I am misremembering or not remembering at the moment. So I was fine with that approach. I understand there were concerns, but I was fine with having a rotating interim.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
I also liked the, the, the concept of the rotating interims for all the departments that lost. And you know, we lost a lot of department heads at the end of last year. In, in the police department in particular, because of the seniority issue, I think there was a question about why the order wasn't flipped, which, which may have accommodated Chief Moody remaining longer into the role. But other than that, I didn't mind conceptually having different people fill the interim role.
Thank you. And Mr. Shea.
Well, I absolutely think the city dropped the ball. I think they, they've set a new precedent as to how they're gonna conduct promoting and, and bringing in interim personnel in the future. And I think what they could have done is taken the high road and just allowed Cheryl to just carry out this, this interim period so that it can reflect that we are in unison as a city and our community is, is recovering from the crisis that we experienced in twenty-twenty, and we're still experiencing now. So I believe, I believe that they truly dropped the ball.
Thank you. And back over to you, Brennan.
Thank you, Justin. My question is, should we have an elected police chief? And the first answer will be from Mr. Shea.
Well, that, that's a difficult question because ideally, yes, but from an administrative and from how the charter exists, it's, it makes it quite cumbersome. And then we have the, the culture of our city and how it's structured. All of those things would have to be re reassigned, I'll put it that way. And I, I just think, you know, if we can do that, that would be great. But the reality of it is, it's not gonna happen. Thank you.
Mr. Lyon, should we have an elected police chief?
No. As we've seen with the, with the, the battle between the sheriff and the county supervisors right now, it really creates an impediment to true management by the, by the, the, what should be the, the top level of government. So, no, I think you can't really, the, there's the inertia of being the incumbent office holder that makes it very difficult to get a person out. And so, no, I would not support electing the police chief.
Mr. Lamar, should we have an elected police chief in Pasadena?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. I think if we have accountability in our city council, if we have accountability in our city manager, if we have accountability with our city, our, our police chief, I think we'll be just fine. So I don't think that we need to have an elected city chief. I think that we have to do a better job at holding each other accountable.
Ten seconds.
It's self-accountable and also city accountable.
Thank you. Jess Rivas, should Pasadena have an elected police chief?
Well, I appreciate the idea of having more direct accountability. I think that's always a good thing. I am hesitant to politicize that role, and we, you know, we see it with our neighbors in LA County and just what's going on with the sheriff and the board of supervisors. I would hate for that to happen here where literally you have the, the sheriff and the board of supervisors suing each other. We don't need that here.
Councilman Kennedy, should Pasadena have an elected police chief?
Absolutely not. We cannot politicize policing in Pasadena. What we can do is make sure that we have the right city manager, who has the right skills and experience and appreciation of the community to make the right selection of our next police chief. Simple.
Thank you. Over to Justin for another great question.
Thank you. In the wake of the economic impact of the pandemic, how can Pasadena afford to pay for such high-profile, however extremely expensive, projects such as easing the Rose Bowl's debt and restoring the Central Library? What are your ideas? Be specific. Mr. Lamar, you're up first.
So for me, I think that we have to do what we have to do to, in order to, you know, help the Rose Bowl out. I'm glad that, you know, we're not in that position anymore, but I think that we should have spent more money on mental health services for our, our families in Pasadena. I think that we also should have spent more money on helping families in Pasadena to sustain them and to help keep them sustained throughout this process. And then, you know, I think, you know, there's so much more that we, that we should have done, but we just didn't do.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
For the Rose Bowl, we have to rethink how we garner the revenue to pay off those two-hundred-million-dollar bonds, and we must re-envision the whole Rose Bowl operation, all of that corridor. And then as it relates to the Central Library, something that could cost over one-hundred-million dollars, we must look at it as our Notre Dame and invite the billionaires that exist in the city of Pasadena to participate in helping us finding the resources to do the retrofit on our central library, an extraordinary asset.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivas.
Yeah, for the city as a public entity, getting our finances in order while recovering from COVID and dealing with these two challenges, this is our biggest, biggest hurdle. So as it comes to the Rose Bowl, I agree with Councilmember Kennedy. We really have to be open to as much as possible to address that huge shortfall that we're seeing. And so that's gonna be coming before the council, I believe, also this month. As for the library,
Ten seconds.
I know we're considering, you know, bringing it to the voters to increase a, to a small amount of our taxes so that we can all chip in and, and, and pay for it that way. And so we need to get voters' input on that.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
On the Rose Bowl, the Rose Bowl debt is the city's debt. So it's not as if we can, can opt not to pay it. We have to pay it. So I think we need to have a really frank, public conversation about what we're doing with the Rose Bowl. And I don't think we do our city any favors when, when we deliver the message from the city that it's fine, it's all good, we're good. Which is the message we keep getting out of City Hall. On the library, I was glad to see that the contract requires a second opinion. We've not yet gotten a second opinion on the engineering and whether even all of that repair is necessary. And part of the program is re-envisioning what a library can be if we're gonna rebuild it.
Thank you. And Mr. Shea.
Well, I believe I, I've had conversations with former city manager on this very issue and the department heads on our finances of the Rose Bowl improvement as well as our current debts. And I believe that there are funding sources out there that could retire a lot of that debt if the city is receptive to entertaining the new concepts or new opportunities that are out there. If they continue to rely on what we had in the past, then we're gonna be
That's time.
struggling with this, this debt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And back over to Brennan.
Hello, guys. Final lightning round question. Do you support creating a tiny home village in Pasadena to provide short-term housing for people experiencing homeless? We'll send it to Brandon Lamar first.
My answer is yes. Not only that, but I've helped place people in tiny homes in San Fernando Valley. And so I know that it works, and I know that it's possible for it to happen. I think that this is a solution to help our homeless population. Not only that, but I think that we should build temporary housing through repurposed motels as well that we have throughout our city.
Ten seconds.
At that as well. So I think there's a lot of things that we could do and that we need to do, and we need to do it now.
Mr. Kennedy, please unmute yourself and provide your answer.
We need a multi-discipline approach, and we need the community to weigh on, weigh in specifically as it relates to tiny homes. But I'm offering an opportunity for us to end homelessness in Pasadena when you take that fifteen percent of the three thousand units that will be built and dedicate those to the extremely low income. Only in my district are we building
Ten seconds.
housing for the formerly senior homeless at the corner of Orange Grove and Fair Oaks, where you formerly saw the Church's Chicken. That's in my district. I have
That's time.
for that, and it's being done.
Councilwoman Rivas, do you support a tiny home village in Pasadena?
I do, especially because I think the pandemic really shined a light on the limitations of our emergency shelter situation. So we typically contract with friends indeed to provide a bad weather shelter. With COVID, we couldn't do that, so we had to rely on motel vouchers, which are not ideal for a whole number of reasons. And so we just didn't have any other options. And so I think tiny homes can, can fill that gap. And so I'm eager to, to see that come before the council soon.
Mr. Lyon, do you?
There is no question that we need transitional housing in this city. We really don't have a viable mechanism for transitional housing. For me, I would rather, at the moment, focus on get, making our existing motel conversion ordinance work because it doesn't work. It's never been used. And then we need a really brave and patient public conversation around other mechanisms. I think we rush into things and we then end up backing down when, when the public opposes them.
And Mr. Shea, final answer of the lightning round, please.
Well, I believe that we need some type of transitional housing for the homeless. I don't know if the tiny housing concept is, is gonna be feasible, especially as it evolves. I think we should focus in on something that's gonna create a sustainable model so we can learn how to eradicate
Ten seconds.
the homelessness while living in a good quality, while, while being in a, in an environment that's giving them hope and, and guidance and, and, and the type of care, whether it's mental or physical, that will give them a quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Mr. Gordon, please take over.
Don't make me take over.
Please, I'm begging you.
Thank you. And, you know, we are getting close to a little after eight o'clock. We wanna respect everybody's time. There's just one more question, and then we'll close out. This is the last call. And the question is, what didn't you get to say tonight? What is the most important thing voters should know about you before casting their votes? You have a one-minute answer, and then we'll be closing out. We'll start with Mr. Lamar.
Thank you. I'll take ten of my seconds and just say, I think Caroline did an amazing job, and I think Mark has some competition on his hands now. But without that, I think that there's so much that needs to be done in Pasadena. There's so much work that has been done, but I think we need more progressive voices to take it to the next level. And when it comes to housing, when it comes to lowering crime, when it comes to accountability, I think that we have to do a better job at it. You know, it saddens me that some people, and you know, it's, it's all of our rights, it's democracy, that some people don't rent control, even though that sixty-two percent of renters are of Pasadena. And there's not one person that I can say that I know of, if I'm wrong, they correct me, that is an actual renter on city council. And I think that we need that voice on city council to support this community. So thank you so much. I hope I can earn your vote. I hope I have earned your vote, and I hope to see you in city council chambers.
Mr. Kennedy. Unmute yourself.
Thank you for listening to us this evening. As I seek real As I seek reelection, I'm honored to be endorsed by Congress member Judy Chu, Assemblymember Chris Holden, Supervisor Catherine Barger, four of my colleagues, including Ms. Rivas on the city council, the Council Federation of Labor, BizFed, PAC, LA League of Conservation Voters, the Southern California Armenian Democrats Act, the Royal Democratic Club, and the Star News, one of the conveners of tonight's event, LA Sentinel Newspaper, and the Police Officers Association. I believe I've earned the support because of my results, experienced leadership. Just keeping it real. Yes, we have accomplished a lot, but we have more to do. There's only one candidate in District Three equipped to do the job, and that is why I want to continue my work on the city council on your behalf to take this city even to higher heights. Working together, we build one Pasadena. Thank you.
Ms. Rivas.
Over the last year, I've been really honored to represent my district, and I've been able to be one of the most progressive voices on the council. And that's exactly what I'm gonna continue to do. And so I look forward to earning the votes this time. I was honored to earn the votes of my colleagues to be appointed to the council, and I look forward to earning the votes of all my neighbors throughout District Five. And more than just earning your vote, I really look forward to continuing to work with you. Just last night, I think I mentioned earlier, I was at a neighborhood meeting, talking to residents, really getting deep into the issues and brainstorming on what we can do to improve our neighborhoods. And so that's what I'm really excited to continue doing. So I look forward to earning your vote and continuing to represent you on the council.
Mr. Lyon.
I'm running for city council in District Seven for two reasons. One, because I love this city. I, you know, I come and sit down at this desk every day and look at, you can't see it now, but the dome of City Hall and and the crest of the San Gabriel Mountains out my window, and I feel incredibly fortunate to live in this amazing city. That's the first reason I'm running. The second is that I think we need a different kind of leadership throughout our country at every level of government. We have lost a spirit of servant leadership in government where someone steps up to be of service to their community for a finite period of time and then steps aside. And I'm stepping up to offer my service around some issues that I think I can help with. And I have some specific, very specific proposals about how to make a difference in our city and improve our city for everyone. Those are on my website at jasonlyonforpasadena.com, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Shea.
Well, with all due respect to the organizers of tonight, I I thank you for this platform. And I would say to the voters in District Seven, I absolutely love Pasadena. I love our district. I have served the district for over 35 years. And what I know that I bring to the table is true lived experience so that your voice is heard every Monday. And I can assure you, with your vote, you will not get anyone who can advocate your interests as I can. And I know that because this is what I've done since the age of seven. And this has always been my life dream is to serve the residents of Pasadena, starting with the residents in District Seven, which we needed. We need to restore South Lake Business District. We need to restore East, our East District over by Allen in Colorado. We need, we need to make sure that public safety is number one because of all of the crimes that have taken place that a lot of people don't even know. And I learned of this in my walk every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Alan. Listen, our time is actually run out. We did pretty well. To keep on track, we're about 13 minutes over. I'd like to thank all the candidates for being here tonight. I have to tell you that I've done these quite a few times. This was a very good event. I wish you could all be on the council. We need this kind of leadership. We need this kind of well-thought-out answers, and I really enjoyed it and appreciate it. I want to thank the Star News. I want to thank our panelists today. And also Caroline, you did do a wonderful job of making sure that we stayed on track. I'm sorry this had to end. We have some more questions I'd love to hear y'all answer. But you did a great job tonight, and thank you so much for participating in this event. Good night, all.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody, for watching.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Sincere thanks, everybody. It was a wonderful evening. Terrific. The city's lucky to have all of you running.
They left us, Tom. They couldn't wait to get out of here.
That was Martin and everybody. Great job. Those were, everybody was terrific. And I did not think it was a one wasted minute in that. Everybody really gave thoughtful answers and addressed the issues and stayed on point. Terrific job.
Tom, this, you know, we stayed on track, and look, we're at 8:14, but that was packed full. That was packed full of information.
You're muted.
Why do you keep muting me? No, the host keeps muting me. That's